Shannon, we cannot hear you at all. We want to make sure we got you before we start.
Yes, I can hear you. I was unfortunately had a quick call from another attorney I needed to address, but I'm ready to go.
All righty, thank you. All right, with that, we will call this regular meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and which are open to public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before tonight's meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Here, great. Tonight, our invocation will be given by George Barlow and then the Pledge of Allegiance. So Ms. Esmondola, will you lead us in that?
Let us pray. Our dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we pray this evening, pray for this great nation. We pray for this great city. Father, we lift up those city employees that work every day. Father, we pray for those first responders that serve every day. Father, we pray for our council tonight as the decisions they make. And Father, we just pray that your will is done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Redeem this to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chaffin, would you like to report out that we had no closed session tonight? Just for the audience?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no closed session and no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Any modifications to the agenda by the council? Okay, the agenda stands. And we'll go straight into our ceremonial presentations. And the first one tonight, and the only one tonight, is the Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. And if we can have the Seek Temple President, Mr. Sarb Tiara, and the Temple Directors join us up front here. All right, as everyone is probably aware, we have a little event coming up in just a couple of weeks that really helps put Yuba City on the map every year, and that is the Seek Festival. So in honor of that, we are going to give a proclamation tonight to you and the temple for Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, which is November 2022. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 100 years, and whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world, and today, there are more than 25 million Sikhs worldwide, and estimated 500,000 Sikhs in the U.S. live in California with the largest concentration living in Yuba City nicknamed Mini Punjab. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, and have distinguished themselves by fostering greater respect among all people through faith and service. And whereas the city of Yuba City has significant population of Sikhs and is committed to respecting the heritage and religions of our diverse community. And whereas today, the city of Yuba City seeks to further embrace the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. And whereas the Seek Temple, under the leadership of the President Sarb Tiara and the Board of Directors, will be hosting the upcoming 43rd Agar Katarn? Did I get it? Okay. Which will include the annual Seek Parade. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 to be Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. I'd like to present this proclamation to you and your board.
Thank you, Dave, and the board, city council. Really appreciate you guys making this happen this year before the parade. Like last year, it was afterwards, there was concerns about, with the community that because it always has happened, and Mark corrected it, and I really appreciate you guys making this happen before. And so I want to thank you guys all for giving us the opportunity to work with the city because we are all in one. And it's just not Seek Festival, it's everybody's festival. And we all need to participate in it. And we all, from the recommendation from our board, we want everybody in Yuba City to please come join with us and share the 43rd annual parade with us. And Nugget Ethan is correct. You said it. And we really appreciate it, you know, from all the bottom of our heart with everyone. And right now, this year, we are going through a remodel, and the city and the county has really helped us to get that through on a short time. And we have asked everybody to participate into this parade this year. And I would like to have the agenda designed, say a few words.
Well, hello, everybody. The way Dave Shaw read the proclamation, it speaks itself. We are one community. We should work together. Like Sarb said, we all should join. November 6th, on Sunday, is holiday. So let's work together under one God. God is one. Let's pray that day for peace, for the community, and for the whole world. Thank you, everyone.
We have a, since we are united, we want to show this year, everybody that is sitting in this audience, if they can all come up, we can take a picture together at the whole community. And that way, we can share this picture out there, that it's just not Sikhs all together. I want all, everybody to be here in this, from the whole community, if we can take a picture. Sunday, make sure you guys are on time. Don't be late because there's going to be a big crowd there, okay?
One of the great things about our community is when we flex like that, and we've had that happen several times tonight with the Sikh community, and a few weeks ago, we had it with Police Department when Sergeant Hatfield retired. So we have a really, really neat community. So with that, we'll move into the business. Agenda item two, Public Communications: Appearance of Interested Citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Tonight, we have one written request. Mr. P.R. Joel, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, as usual.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Again, nine months, mine coming out here for the same old thing, the name of the park. Now, the gentlemen that were here, they are from the Gurudwara Yuba City. They, they already know what is going on and what is not being going on. But my concern right now is, yes, I do not approve the name that you have named. Now, thank you to you, Mr. Shaw, that he had made an appointment for me to meet with Karen Baines on Saturday. Now, who else is going to be there? I don't know, and I haven't been told. But I will attend that meeting, and we'll go from there. Now, the problem and the questions come in that I can say standing here is, you know, no one has the courage to stand up for the truth. And here's a true statement that has happened, and here, it's a, my uncle, my dad's older brother, once, many, many, many years ago, told him, he said, hey, I quote him, "You tell the truth, nobody listens to you. I lie, everybody listens to me." End of quote. About 30 years ago, my cousin said the same thing to me. He said, "Pira, you need to lie." And my reply was, "Thanks, but no thanks." One member of the family is good enough to lie, which you are, my cousin. So anyhow, I'm trying to look at to see, yes, I'm going to keep on speaking the truth. Doesn't make any difference what happened or how it happened. But, you know, Mr. McIntyre presented to the council that we cannot name that park Harder Parkway, or, excuse me, Harder Park, because there's already one. Did you, any of you had come up to say, hey, there are other streets that we can name? No, because you didn't have the courage to speak or to say the truth. Now, here is the truth why that was not mentioned. Do you know that we're Harder Parkway, and there's going to be a name of my grandfather, Tully? And Tully Expressway is going to go all the way up to Peach Road, it's going to be a thoroughfare just as large as Harder Parkway. Why couldn't it be named? Because you didn't have the courage to speak. You went with the flow. You followed the leader, said this is right, this is wrong. That's what you did. Now, I was told by, by Mr. Shaw this afternoon, the only way this is going to happen is either do that procedure or by court. Now, I'm not going to do that procedure because that procedure, I don't know if you guys read it before or had any comments before it was done. It is all in favor of Mr. Baines. I, as far as I know, that I can believe Mr. Shaw dictated it and Mr. Chaffin wrote it, so it'll be legal. I don't know if you guys had any input before it was written, but I can say this, that you probably had it after it was written, prove it or not to prove it. And you all went, yes, we approve it. So my saying is of Tully to say a few things about, he was one of the four, first four to settle in this community. Not one, but four. They all came from the same village. Now, he worked for Eager for years and then Poole. Now, there was another gentleman as a nephew to Tully. His name was Blunt Singh Bharat. He graduated from Stanford University with the degree of Electrical Engineering. He did not go into the business of electrical engineer. He enlisted in the U.S. government's military services to fight World War II. A volunteer born in India but went into the service. That's what you call a service. Tully went with some of his coworkers to the post office to support that. They bought all the war bonds that they had at the post office that day. That's what is called a community service. What did the Dar do? In my opinion, he cheated, he lied, he manipulated. And yet, we have a name on the park saying the Dar is Baines. What I'm saying is, all you have to do is pick one subject, whichever one that I say, and prove me wrong, and I will come out and humbly apologize. And that was the same scenario I said two weeks ago to Mr. Shaw, that talked to his family member, which he can claims a Punjabi family is the most honest family. I said, "If that person tells you that I am lying, I will quit." Now, it gives me more reason because I am telling the truth all along, but you don't listen. Now, Tully, that didn't stop there. Tully.
Thank you, Mr. Joel. Mr. Chaffin, just for the record, can you tell us who wrote the procedures and then presented it to council?
Yes, the procedures were prepared under the city, city attorney's office. They were reviewed by the city manager and posted by the city manager on the city's website. So those, those procedures, are you talking about the revocation procedures or the policy itself?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So they were prepared by our office, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Moving on, Heather Esman, you have requested time to speak.
Good evening. I didn't, I just requested here. I didn't request five minutes, but that's okay. I don't need five minutes. So first of all, thank you, Councilman Harris, for wearing pink. This is still October. I appreciate that. From a, a family member, survivor in the family, family member, whatever. So anyways, I wanted to ask, so I have, I'm an avid bicyclist, as you all know, and I've had a bit of a problem lately because I've had to, and I brought my tire, so to demonstrate, I have had two flat tires due to these streets in the last month. And I, I do remember, so recently, I haven't been riding in the morning, but when I was riding regularly to the park and ride on Bog and 99, the only time I ever saw a street cleaning machine was one time. And I'd been riding like maybe two years, I'd been doing that either with my vehicle if it was raining or bicycle. I even, I was the only one that had one of those bicycle lockers that they have on the park and ride. But I, I don't know what the policy is. I know that it, that it would be nice if the citizens would go out and sweep in front of their yards, but they, they're not going to do that on Garden Highway, which is where I got this one. The other one I didn't bring because it was most likely Richland within the keyhole. So it would be nice if there was some way to communicate or work with them. I'm not, I'm not, I don't have to have my bicycle, but I can't imagine all those people, and I'm sure you've seen plenty of them on their bicycle, and that's all they've probably got, that wouldn't be able to afford to pay the 20 bucks to have it fixed at Vans if, or whatever it would cost them if they tried to fix it themselves. So it would be nice, and I don't know, like I said, if they, you currently have a vehicle, but I've, I don't remember anybody. Have you ever seen a, a street cleaner come by? You do? Good, because I've never seen some, maybe, maybe it's not in our area? Don't know? So. Yeah, well, it's, so what I typically see is the streets are clean, but wherever the bicycle lanes are, they're full of rocks and glass and all sorts of other things. And people who clean aren't going to go all the way out, some of those are relatively wide, they're not going to go all the way out to the, you know, in the middle of the street to clean the street. But anyways, that was my three minutes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moody, can you follow up at a later date, if you could, with, with Ms. Esman? Because we've got a, a whole schedule throughout the whole city of how often they're done, and could you follow up offline with that? Thank you. All right. Any other public comment for things not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, Francis Coats, 3392 Camonito Avenue, Yuba City. One is that Pira's father, Tully Joel, was a great man, and sooner or later, something in this town ought to be named for him. He worked for my father, Frank Poole, my grandfather, Frank Poole. My father worked with him. The other thing is, this city council should pressure the Department of Parks and Recreation to open the park in the Buttes. It's very important to the people of this town. It's not important to the supervisors. They represent the ag interests. But the people of this town, every child in school would benefit from that park being open. Every piece of property in this town would be more valuable because that park was open. You could attack, attract better employers by indicating this town actually cared about attracting people. Thanks.
Ms. Langley, would it be you that would follow up with clarification on that, and or that be Mr. McIntyre?
We'll tag team it.
Okay, thank you. If you could make sure that you get your information to Mr. McIntyre tonight before you leave, and that way you can follow up. All right, any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion for these. Sorry, there will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. Do we have any public comment on consent items three through seven tonight? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for comment and/or action.
To the mayor.
Vice Mayor.
To the mayor, please.
Oh.
We do have public comment on item seven.
Oh, that's what you were, oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking it was eight. So, okay. Yeah, no, we can, he can, you can make your public comment, Mr. Coats, because item seven is part of the consent calendar.
Francis Coats, 3392 Camonito Avenue, Yuba City, California. In addition to SEQA, you have to comply with the public trust doctrine in adopting any regulation that's going to affect public access to or use of the navigable Feather River. To do that, your obligation is to consider the effect of your action on the public trust interest, in this case, the right to be on and use the Feather River for recreation, including the banks up to the ordinary high water mark. You have to avoid, so far as feasible, interfering with that use to the extent feasible when feasible. And you have to do that in a public coherent process facilitating public participation. You're having a public hearing, obviously you've got a public process. There's a significant question about whether or not the notice you gave and the information in your material actually addresses whether or not and to what extent you're affecting public access to and use of the Feather River, and whether or not they're feasible alternatives, and whether you let the public know that those issues were on the table. You've got a county council to talk about that, but that's something that people miss all the time, and ordinances have been blown up over it. So you, you want to be careful. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Back to, I'll give the public one more chance. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Now we'll come back to the council for comments, questions, or actions.
To the mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Calendar, agenda items three through seven.
Okay, I have a motion by the vice mayor. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, consent calendar items carry. We will move on to business item number eight, which is the Enterprise Resource Planning, the ERP procurement and implementation support. Mr. Anson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shaw, members of the council. Tonight, I'm bringing you the Professional Service Agreement with SDI Presence LLC of Los Angeles, California, for the development of a Request for Proposal, RFP, for the procurement and implementation of an Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, software platform to include financials, human resources, and payroll functions. Just a little background, our existing solution, Penimation, was originally purchased in 1997 for $585,000. Animation includes modules for financials, human resources, payroll, community development, and utility billing. So over the last 20-plus years, the software has, had been updated several times, but the core code remains the same as it was in 1997. So just to put that in a little perspective, there's 13 current Yuba City employees that have been born after we implemented that software. So, sold. Sorry you were here, weren't you? So the system is dated. It's, it's not very useful, user-friendly, and it doesn't comply with current state and federal reporting standards. On the payroll side, we have been struggling to properly code and report the more complex pay scenarios that have come about from negotiations. So the expected cost to purchase and implement a replacement for the system is around one and a half million dollars. Staff programmed one and a half million dollars into the CIP budget as part of the 2022-2023 budget process that was approved by council, and the funds are coming from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, or HR 1319. A little more about ERP. ERP procurement and implementations are very complex. Staff quickly realized that we didn't have the expertise or the time to manage a project on our own. So bringing in a specialist to assist ensure staff identifies and selects the best solution at the most competitive price in a timely manner. And time is important as all the ARPA funds need to be spent by December of 2024. After reaching out to industry associations and evaluating several professionals, evaluating several professionals, staff found that SDI Presence LLC is best suited for this project. They specialize in government ERP procurement and implementation and have over 20 years of experience with over 200 public sector agencies as clients. As part of this proposal, we included the, oh, no, I skipped too far. Let me go back a little. The proposal from SDI for the procurement of the new ERP system, this is part of the project is broken up into five phases. The first phase is to initiate the project. This will develop the work plan and identify the key stakeholders. Next phase is to define the requirements. This is where we'll go over everything that we currently do and what we'd like to do in the new system. Third phase is the prepare and release of the RFP, very similar to what we already do. Phase four is to evaluate and select the solution that best fills our needs, and the final phase will involve negotiating with the vendor and bringing the final purchase to council for approval. The procurement project is expected to take at least 30 weeks. The proposal includes 454 hours of, to complete, and with a flat rate of $185 an hour, for a total cost of $83,990. As part of this proposal, we did include an optional item, and that is to have SDI managed implementation. We put this as optional because it is very dependent on what system we end up selecting as part of the RFP. A formal proposal outlining exactly what will be included will be produced once the new system is selected. Since SDI has a great deal of experience in implementing these systems, they were able to provide some estimates for time and costs. Implementation is expected to take two years, one year for financials and one year for the human resources and payroll part. This estimate is 2,080 hours to complete, again at the flat rate of $185 an hour, for not to exceed amount of $384,800. So again, this is very dependent on the solution selected, so this cost may change. And as part of the purchase of the new system, we will also present to the council this option and details of their proposal at that time. Our goal is to be as transparent as possible with this project. We want to make sure you have as much deal as you had at the beginning of this project so you know what you're getting into and what we're wanting to commit to. With that recommendation, staff recommends to adopt a resolution awarding a professional service agreement to SDI Presence LLC of Los Angeles, California, for development of a Request for Proposal, RFP, for the procurement and implementation of the Enterprise Resource Planning and Human Resources Payroll Software Platform in the amount of $83,990, with a contingency of $10,000 for procurement services and an option for implementation support not to exceed $384,800, with the finding that is in the best interest of the city. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from the council? Any questions? All right, we will take it out to the public for public comment. And Ms. Esman, you have requested to speak. You have three minutes. You have three minutes.
Hi. So, sorry, me again. I, it sounds like it's, you're just approving the, because I read this, and I was trying to figure out, I even asked, what was the scope of work? Because I'm used to, I've seen plenty of contracts, so, and I'm used to seeing just a nice little scope of work, which also defines the timeframes and things like that. They didn't have that. They had some sort of nice, pretty brochure with, like, 20 pages that you're supposed to read through. So it still wasn't clear to me, and some of the things were cleared in this presentation, so thank you. But it sounds like you're just approving right now the $84,000 potential contingency, and then the option is not approved yet, and you'll approve that later? I'm not quite sure if I understand that, but I'm throwing that out there for this first thing. The second thing is, I really caution any board or any council to make sure that when you do any types of contracts with consultants, and I know that the city does a good job of this, but there are times where you'll get something that's so specialized, you just kind of, oh, that looks nice, and we'll throw it through there, that there aren't an actual timeframe and some reins on some of those things. I've seen school district after school district have problems with my job where the board isn't paying attention, they assume that somebody at the school is paying attention, and they end up getting ripped off in the end, where we've actually had to tell them that they have to pay something back, and they're never getting the money from the consultants. So it's really important to make sure as a group, because you're approving these, that if there isn't a specific timeframe in there, or that there's, at least we have kind of that in the control of the $84,000, that at least there's a timeframe in there so that they're not kind of pushing things out and pushing things out, because as he was saying, you have to get this spent by a certain timeframe, and that's the whole goal of spending the 85. Otherwise, why do you need to spend the 85? You can just have the people at the city do it themselves, because you already have the 1.5 million there. It's just a matter of getting that spent within the timeframe. So I do encourage you to always read the materials very well and make sure if there's something that seems to be missing there that potentially that you ask. I'm not sure, you could have, there's always conversations in the background that we're not privy to, but I'm hoping somewhere that there's a, that there's an actual clause in there that they, they have to have this done by a specific time due to the strict timelines that he, that he said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to council for comments and/or action.
Through the mayor. I think, Brian, you, if you kind of go back a couple of slides, it has some timelines in there, right? One was procurement not to exceed 30 weeks and...
There is the 30 weeks, and there is the hard limit of the 454 hours.
Right.
Most of that's going to be on city staff to manage and maintain and make sure that they are doing what we want them to do in a timely fashion. And that's where the $185 flat rate, it's a billable time, it's not a guaranteed amount. So they're not guaranteed the $83,000. They're guaranteed the time they put into it.
It's paid by the hour.
Yes.
So it's not necessarily anything paid upfront in any aspect of this. It's always going to be an hourly managed by the project of the scope of that timeframe, or whatever that particular scope of project, and then hourly, and you're going to be checking that, and our billing's going to be checked, our finance department will be checking that. And I'm, and I'm certain our city manager will be checking that. So we have, I think, like, three, already three checks and balances in that kind of scope, just to assure the process is going to be well managed for this particular contract. Okay, thank you.
The finance director being one of the key stakeholders in this project.
Yeah, he doesn't let anything just slip through his, yep. He's a tough one. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the council? Before I ask for action, reiterate the same thing. I've been through this process with other entities, and the numbers definitely aren't out of line with what you see on the scope of other things. And timing is everything. I like the 30 weeks hard on the first phase, and the second phase with the one to two years, and that'll be kind of a fluid, because in the accounting world, it's going to be ideal if they can change over one on January 1, one year, change over the other part January 1 of the next year, and I'm sure they'll be looking at things like continuity of data and thing, and all this merge processes kind of come in. So thank you for your presentation tonight, and I really do think it's realistic, because it takes longer than you really realize when you start going through these. So, thank you. I will bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, before I make my motion, just to say that it's, I'm pleased to see that we're bringing our software equipment and all the networking up to date, so well done, finance and IT department. I move to adopt the resolution awarding a professional. Do I need to read it all the way through, Mr. City Attorney? Item as recommended in the agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Councilwoman Espendola, and I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Brian, thank you very much, and go forth and get us moved over to a new system, please. So, all right, we'll move to Agenda Item Nine, 2021 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. Chief Alexander, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the 2021 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, also known as the SAFER Grant. Last year, we applied for this grant with the intent to not replace our current staffing model, but to enhance it based upon current and expected service demands within the fire department. The thought process being that we'll utilize this grant to bridge the gap between where we are and where we need to be. In September, we were notified by FEMA that we were successful in the grant application process. This grant is a term for three years. It is a no-cost match for the city. The award amount is just under $1.2 million, with the intent to hire three firefighters at firefighter two wages, with the purpose to add a fourth person to the daily aerial ladder truck staffing, increasing daily staffing operation to 17 personnel. We wrote this grant and were successful based upon adding a fourth person to a ladder truck model, and this is to meet National Fire Protection Agency 1710 staffing level recommendations. This allows apparatus to get back in service, which is a capacity, operational capacity issue for us right now. Since last year, 47% of our calls were overlapping calls, so this is a high priority. This would increase our capacity, it would increase our capabilities, and all this is data-proven from the 2010 National Institute of Standards and Technology Study, NFPA 1710 recommendations, and a 2010 NFPA research document. Most larger fire department agencies have already gone to a four-person ladder truck operations. However, we surveyed similar-sized fire departments like ours, and you can see the list that is up on the board behind me, with the bottom three having an over-hire component to their four-person staffing model. There are some financial costs that are not covered by the grant, specifically the items listed here. Recruitment costs at just over $7,000 total, those can be absorbed in our current fiscal year budget. Uniforms and personal protective equipment costs over $27,000 for the total, those can be absorbed in our current fiscal budget and possible absorbed in our anticipated 23-24 budget. This grant was written prior to a salary increase to a rate reopeners. And the way that our firefighter step increases work, for the first year will actually save money, as this was written as a firefighter two wages. However, in years two and three, there will be a $35,000 per year that will not be covered by the grant in regards to wages and benefits. This does not include overtime behind the fourth person, approximately $19,000 per year. But the biggest item on this that concerns me the most is that this is a limited-term positions. This gets us back to the recruitment and retention issues that I've discussed with you in the past regarding previous SAFER grants. When we were under those models, since 2016, we lost 15 personnel to other agencies. And when you have that type of turnover, you encumber many of the item costs that you see on here and additional others. However, since January, when council authorized us to go to permanent staffing model with permanent employees, we've had zero individuals leave for other agencies, so a dramatic change in our overall operations. What the grant does allow and encourage is permanent employee hiring. So the cost associated with permanent employees after or in year four in January 26 would be $483,000. This does have an inflation calculator included into it. And that would, that would come from the general fund if this was a permanent ladder truck staffing as written as the way the grant is now. The other option is an over-hire model, where you use those permanent employees to fill behind vacant or leave positions to offset overtime costs. Those kinds of, those funds could be offset through the fire department's overtime funds, and no general net loss to the general fund. There are a few conditions of the grant. It must not incur any firefighter layoffs of safer-funded or non-safere funded positions throughout the course of the grant. We must fill all the safer-funded positions. We can't just leave those vacant. And it basically says we must maintain all of our operational staffing numbers that we have today, including the three positions, for the safer positions. The timeline associated with this is that we need to accept or deny it within 30 days, which would put us at October 21 of this year. If the grant is accepted, we need to determine permanent versus limited-term needs hiring for recruitment process. The grant requires no more than 100 days from the date of acceptance to filling those positions, so whether we accept or deny it, then we have 180 days to get those individuals on that ladder truck. We expect to receive shipment of our ladder truck in January of 2023, and if the grant is accepted, we would expect personnel staffing that ladder truck in February of '23. Staff's recommendation is to accept the 21, 2021 SAFER Grant, and to authorize the city to hire the individuals as permanent employees, with council having the flexibility to determine a permanent ladder truck staffing model or over-hire staffing model at the conclusion of the grant. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Is there any questions from the council?
Yes, sir.
No, I don't really have any questions, primarily because of the meetings we had with Chief ahead of this presentation, which is very informative and much appreciated, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, great presentation, and congratulations on getting the grant to this stage. I know at this point last year, it wasn't looking promising to get this, and so I know this is, this is exciting news, so thank you for that, and thank you and your, your men and women for keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Questions or comments? You can go ahead if you'd like to make in there.
Through the mayor, I have more of a comment. I think I'm, anyway, I'm really proud of the fact that you worked so hard to get to this grant and completed it. As a fire chief, you wrote this grant, so I just want to say, commend you for that. That's not an easy task on top of everything else that you got going, and the contribution of everyone else of the team to help make sure that we are improving any way of our fire service in our community is commendable, important, and I like that kind of initiative. I think it's amazing that we're, we're, we have this opportunity, because things have changed with this, and, and my colleague will probably speak more eloquently to the subject, because he's much more of a subject matter person on this than I am, but I am a grant person, you know, have written grants and been pretty good at it for many years. I am just really impressed with our city being one of the ones selected for this particular project, and for us to get to a higher level of efficiency and practice of fire service to take care of our community, and I just want to say thank you to you and to everyone in the fire services for, for doing this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, I don't know that everyone knows how extremely competitive getting a SAFER Grant is. It is extremely competitive. I used to review, back in Washington, SAFER Grant applications, and for us to come through at this time is, is not only a testament to you, but the working relationship with the firefighters in Local 3793. The ability to present this to us so that we have the opportunity to accept it is a joint effort, and it's recognized, the working relationship and the cooperation of understanding that at the end of the grant, we may have a decision to make. I think all of us would love that to be a permanent ladder truck staffing, and I hope that's what we'll be able to do, but the willingness to at least consider that over-hire is huge. It's, it speaks volumes, probably more than most people will know. SAFER Grants, especially ones with no match, are obviously a very good, a very good thing. And I just, again, can't applaud enough the work of the entire fire department and the working relationship that you all have to come to solutions to serve our citizens, and I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, I can echo exactly what all of my fellow councilmembers have said. Great job between you and your entire team. I remember when we were going through the budget workshops just a few years ago, we started talking about, don't think of what we need in the next 12 months, but let's start thinking about what our department's going to look like in five to 10 years. And you guys have done that. Your leadership and replacement of the ladder truck, now the forward-thinking, you guys know best how to protect our city, and we're very honored to have you guys do that. And I know when I came out from cap to cap, I had seen other agencies use the SAFER Grants like this and forward-thinking, where we had always been basically putting a Band-Aid on something in the past. So I am thrilled that you guys are embracing this and looking to move this thing forward, and, and it's a collaborative effort, because speaking with, with our members, they're behind you 100%, and to me, that speaks volumes of our department and your leadership. So I just want to say thank you like the rest of them did. Very long-winded, though.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there any public comments on this?
Go fire.
All right. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Bringing it back to the council for any further comments, questions, or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to recommend, or move that we accept Recommendations A, B, and C of Item Number Nine, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Boomgarden, a second by Councilmember Espendola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Keep our city safe, Chief, and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, is there any future agenda items that someone wants to come forward from the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 11. That is our city manager's report. Ms. Langley, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a couple of things coming up. We do have a community meeting for the Bike Path Project. It's October 26 from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Gray Avenue Middle School. Also, on Saturday, October 29, the Police Department is having a trick-or-treat tour at the PD, so we encourage people to attend that. And then also, this last week, we had a community meeting at the Moose Lodge for a Habitat for Humanity proposed project on city-owned property on Walton Avenue, just south of the Moose Lodge, for 20 units for low-income affordable housing for seniors, and so we will bring that to council in closed session on November 1st to discuss further. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will move into council reports. Councilmember Espendola.
Saving time, nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
I have a little bit more than that, but not a lot. Not a lot. Let's see here. We continue with the Habitat for Humanity calls, the weekly or bi-weekly planning and feedback calls for the, for various projects, and I think those are going quite well so far. We've got, given a lot of feedback. Subufka attended that. I will leave that for Mr. Vice Mayor, since he is the chair. I did attend Gil Sizer for Mayor, who had a conflict. I was happy to fill in for him, and that was primarily, it was a really, I mean, like, I think it was a seven-minute meeting, just a lot of formalities, not a, not a major thing. Everything's, it went long, yeah. Did get a chance to attend Business After Hours event over at Teagarden House, where the public had an opportunity to meet and converse with and learn from our, our local homeless officers, Officer Kosky, of course, and definitely Lynn Con... officers, Officer Kosky, of course, and definitely Lincon from Sutter County. They're informative, I think they provided a lot of information to folks, and it was pretty well-attended, so it was nice to have that. I'm sure it's not the last one either. I did, like our city manager mentioned, present with vice mayor at the community meeting at the Moose Lodge regarding the Habitat for Humanity project, just south of that property, they provided some input and feedback on their thoughts on that project. And then today, we had the second meeting of the local film commission. We had the quarterly report provided by Sabrina, and she's made quite a bit of progress. I think one thing that she sent up was that the value of the services they provided so far, had we had to pay for them on our own, was $140,000, but the contract agreement was, is a $48,000 contract. So we're getting bang for the buck already. She provided some numbers that, at first glance, might be, appear to be a little bit small, but the fact, but based on her experience, the inquiries and the projects we've already had come to this community so early in this process is a very good sign, and she also talked about the enthusiasm our community has shown for this commission, and the number of folks who can see, if we can just bear through the beginning stages, see the potential and see that chart, the economic importance and feedback and kickback financially for the community is really going to ramp up. And she said it's going, even though that has happened for Shasta County, but here, she anticipates it being any faster because of the community support that we've, that she's received so far. I learned also, the main, the granddaddy of all the recognition that you want is the California Film Commission, because once you get, and there's a lot of processes and things you have to have in place to be accepted and recognized by them, and once you have that, it's kind of a windfall for several other, even up to national-level film commissions, which would also all bring their own benefits as far as staffing, site locations, being able to track the economic benefit, jobs, the list goes on and on. So we are well on our way, we have that one accreditation, and then the other things are really scheduled to fall into place. So the momentum is exciting, the energy in the room is exciting, and I think we're on to something really good here. So, thank you.
Councilmember Boongardan.
Participated in a development impact fee ad hoc committee meeting. We continue to take a look at development impact fees within the city. This particular meeting was, dealt with parks fees, we're looking at roads, parks, et cetera, and the idea here is just to make sure that as we continue to move forward, that our fees are commensurate with what it takes to grow the city, but also provide services to the city at the same time. More meetings to come. Attended a senior commission meeting, where the director of the food bank presented to the senior commission about linkages between the food insecurity programs that the senior commission is involved with, and where the food bank might partner with them. I want to mention that on October 20, which is two days from now, it's trick-or-treat on Pluma Street from 4 o'clock till 6 p.m., and so if you've got little ones, come on down, or if even you, mayor, we might trick-or-treat together, I don't know. And finally, today, we had the honor of recognizing Senator Nielsen, Jim Nielsen, as he winds up his very stellar career in support of Uba City, and I'll leave most of that to you, sir.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. So I'll begin with our Subufka meeting, Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency. The big news, it hit the newspaper, was that Subufka will receive 1.4, excuse me, 1.14 million of the total 50.4 million of the state water approved from Proposition 68, funding to pay for planning costs related to the Oroville Wildlife Area Robinson's riffle project. So that's big news. Thanks to, heads up by Councilwoman Espendola, I was brought up to date on a concern we have from one of our citizens that live along Second Street in Uba City. These are individuals that have property that essentially is the levy and beyond. And what's problematic about that is that these levies need to be maintained, they provide safety for all of us. And the concerns of the neighbors were that, the ones that showed up, were that they weren't alerted in a timely manner about the removal of some trees and some vegetation on their property. So we are going to follow up on that meeting with another meeting on the 24th here in the council chambers, 6:30, and we're addressing, we're inviting all the neighbors to come, so we can sit down and come to some kind of a compromise or conclusion on this, because as I mentioned at our meeting, we are everything, and mostly, we're transparent, and I want that to be brought across. I also attended the meet and greet at the Teagarden House. The city did a great job, and the county, bringing the certain individuals together to address the homeless issue with businesses. Mosquito, we voted on a new board president with the resignation of Bill Harris, who was in the position for 17 years. We elected Dave Schmittl to the position. We did the quarterly review and the manager's assessment. As was mentioned earlier, we had a very spirited meeting at the Moose Lodge the other evening to discuss the possibility of senior housing. For about as long as I can remember, people have approached me and said, when are we going to get more senior housing? And so we have an opportunity here with Habitat as a potential partner. One of the things that the city did was to reach out to make sure the neighbors knew of this meeting, and I alerted the leadership at the Moose to, their members, the Moose Lodge that I'm a member of, also a member of, has got something like 2,600 members. I don't think all of them showed up, but most of them did. And I was, I was, I know she hates being put on the spot, but I was so proud of the team and the work that they did that evening, and I was, I was told in subsequent days at the Moose, how impressed individuals were of the presentation and the job that the city, the professionalism that the city put on. And so that's going to be one of those to stay, you know, we'll have to stay tuned to see where that goes, and that's all I got.
All righty, sir. Mine will be brief as well. First of all, thank you to my colleagues for covering for me. I have two deadlines every year that impact me greatly because of tax filings, and we just got through one, so I was having to focus on my business, so thank you for covering the meetings and things for me during the last couple of weeks. As was already said, we had the opportunity as a city today to honor Senator Jim Nielsen for a long distinguished career. If you start thinking back of the lives that he's touched, and the things that he's done for the entire North State over his long career, it's a long list, and it's been great to have him there, along with Assemblyman Gallagher and Congressman Lamafa as well. We often refer to those as the Three Amigos, or the Three, because they work very well together between the state and the federal level, and they've done a lot of things for our community. So it was nice to honor him today and listen to some stories and see some old friends that retired from the city, so it was a good time there. We were able to attend a candlelight vigil on Saturday night that was held here. It's kind of ironic that we just recognized Seek Awareness Month for the upcoming month, and we all are familiar with the tragedy that is, that's happened in Manteca, and it actually has a connection back to Uba City. So there was a candlelight vigil here on Saturday night. Thank you, Ms. Langley, for going the extra mile and getting us all set up and making sure everybody was comfortable and stuff on a Saturday night here, opening and making sure they had access to the restrooms and things. But a request was made, and I'm sure we'll be looking at bringing something forward to just show our support to the family in the coming days. There was a second vigil, and it was someone that we all knew, and you see the signs around town right now in the community. We had a vigil Thursday night for Eric Pomeroy, who was tragically killed last, has it been almost a week, or the prev, yes, Saturday, the previous Saturday, or no, it was last Saturday. Yeah, last Saturday. And the irony is, many of us had just seen him 12 hours before that, and he was a person that always gave back to the community, stepped up and provided for the kids on the swim team, and got that regoing. It's just, you could see how the impact of that's going to radiate through our community. So there is a service for him on Thursday at noon at Adventure Church, and with that, we're going to close tonight in memory of Eric Pomeroy. May rest in peace.